Welcome, everybody, to May 21st, 2024 zoning board meeting. My name is Marty Aikens. I'm the chairman. Our clerk, Ms. Griffin, behind me, the chief inspector, Mr. Anderson. And board members here, Mr. Hemmle, Mr. Chin, Ms. Barry, and Ms. O'Brien. If you have a cellphone or a pager, just please shut it off. Talk outside if you want. It's pretty hard to hear in here as it is. If anyone's going to testify tonight, could you please stand up and raise your right hand? If you're going to testify at all, or you might testify, please take an oath. If you don't, you will not be able to. Mr. Chin?
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and you know if you've got the truth in the matter now?
I have, I have, I make a motion to waive the reading.
Make a motion to waive the reading as presented?
Previous minute? Was that May 4th?
May 7th.
7th.
May 7th.
On the motion, standing on all in favor?
Aye.
Also moved. I have two things we want to do here. First, I have case number ZB A 2425, 192 Summit Ave. They want an extension. If we could give them June 4th, please, get that done.
ZB A 2425, attorney William Phelan for Varian's and Finding to Construct conditions in the rear. The current dwelling established living quarters on the premise numbered 192 Summit Ave in Quincy. Make a motion to extend to when?
June 4th.
June 4th, 2024.
Second. On the motion, standing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. We have another request here. ZB A 2432, Brian LaRoche, 16 Lee Street. Let's move that to June 4th also.
ZB A 24 dash 32, Brian LaRoche, Reverie's and Special Permit Floodplain to demolish the existing single-family dwelling. Construct a three-story, two-family dwelling on the premise numbered 16 Lee Street. Make a motion to extend it to June 4th, 2024.
On the motion, standing on all in favor?
Aye.
Approved, approved, approved. I have a six-month extension here. ZB A 2330, 657 Quincy Shore Drive. I could have a motion for that, please, to extend that for six months.
I have a motion, ZB A 23 dash 30, Nitro Petitioner JB, JCBT Architect that they seeking a variance. Construct in addition to the existing second floor and finish, finish the basement violation of city zoning ordinance. Chapter 375, 4.11 table of dimensional requirements far on the premises numbered 657 Quincy Shore Drive. Make a motion to extend for six months.
Second. On the motion, standing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. I already signed it. Further on tonight's agenda on the whole business. 91 Hampden Street Circle, variance to convert the existing single-family home into a two-family home on the premises. Counselor, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Patrick Foley, business address 265 Willard Street. And I'm the attorney for the project here. I'm joined here by Paul Lazard, who's our architect for the project. We presented 91 Hampden Circle back in early April. And when we came up here in early April, you know, we painted the picture of the street where there's, you know, a lot of singles, two families and three families on that street. And the lot size at 91 Hampden Circle is 6,969 square feet. And it's one of the biggest lot sizes on the street. So right now, currently, there's a single-family home on there. And when we came up here in April, you know, we were looking to change it to a two-family. We presented it to the board. And everyone seemed to be on board with having a two-family there. But they had an issue with the breezeway that we had connecting the two units. And after going back and forth with the board, they suggested either we, you know, lose the breezeway into a traditional two-family home or subdivide it and do another single on the other lot. So after speaking about it with our client, they decided they want to try to do a subdivision on the new lot. So what he is seeking to do now is to subdivide the property and build a new single-family home. Parcel A, where the home is now, will be 3,517 square feet. And the new, the new proposed parcel will be 3,350 square feet. The new home before, four bedrooms, you know, kitchen, living room on the first floor, dining room, and then off to the side, there's a 10-foot wide, you know, driveway. They'll fit about two and a half cars. So Paul's just going to come up and just walk you through the layout of the proposed home.
Okay, thanks. My name is Paul Lazard. I'm a registered architect working out of Salem, Mass. at 13 Station Road in Salem. And it seemed to me some of the advice that came from the board in the event that the client wanted to do a subdivision and a separate building were to make the building similar to the existing building that's there. So we have added several features to the building. And one of which is a front porch. And also you have windows positioned similar to the existing house. And also you have this hip roof. And also there is a dormer similar to the existing house. So I can
Counselor, I don't have a set of those plans. You did a new set of plans, you're saying. I got the new, the new one that was uploaded.
We got the block plan.
I haven't got a new set of plans with porches and all that and everything else. Anyone else here have? No?
I didn't, I didn't send them to you, so.
Well, that's no good. Then let's do this another day. Let's, let's look at another day to come back. I want to see a set of plans. I want to look at them. I want to go there, look at it. And I'm going to tell you right now, I think it's a little bit too wide, just mine. I don't like it that close to, right, you get 12 feet and you get a driveway. You want to split it up. I'm not in favor of it myself, but. Anyone else here has something to say about those set of plans that are there subdivided? Now they're going to subdivide the lot, which I didn't know. I thought we were just, that just came to me just now. Did anyone here know we're subdividing the lot?
I thought that's what we suggested.
A couple people did on the board said that. That wasn't me. I didn't, I, I don't like breezeways. I like attached houses if you have to have a breezeway, I get it.
We didn't approve it when it came up the last time with the breezeway. We suggested they come back proposing the subdivision. We did not receive the new renderings in advance.
All right.
But the dialogue, Mr. Chair, that we had with the board, there was either come back with you like a traditional two-family.
We have to have a set of plans two weeks ahead of time. Everyone knows that. Everyone that does business here knows that. How am I going to look at, I'm not going to make a decision just looking at it quick when I can sit home and decipher this over an hour or two.
Do you, do you want it in PDF, digital?
The same way you can. However, you can get it to her, our clerk, so our clerk can get it to us.
It's June 4th, okay, Mr. Chair?
You can get them out that fast, that's fine. I want, I want them right away, then tomorrow, right?
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, you got it.
Do you receive it by PDF digitally, or?
Speak to my clerk, please.
Motion?
Yep, June 4th, another one.
Make a motion, ZB A 24 dash 12, Dow Xiao Ping for variance to convert the existing single-family home into a two-family home on the premise 91 Hampden Circle. Make a motion to move it to June 4th.
Second. On the motion, standing on all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, also, June 4th, minutes. What's further on tonight's business? ZB A 2415, JBC Architect Reverie's demolishes existing enclosed porch and construct a two-and-a-half-story addition home to the left side of the property, 23 Batol Street.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Jim Chan, the architect. Want to, if you know that we would like to withdraw the project without prejudice.
Okay.
And as a recommendation from the board that will submit another set of hearing what the lot's subdivided.
Sounds good. On the motion, withdraw without prejudice, please?
ZB A 24 dash 15, JBC Architect Reverie's demolishes existing siding closed porch. Construct a two-and-a-half-story, single-family home to the left side of the property on the premise numbered 23 Batol Street Quincy. We make a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Second. On the motion, standing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Further on tonight's business, new business. Tim Johnson, Reverie's, ZB A 2417, to expand an approximate 2,880 square foot standing brick commercial building by adding addition 1,788 square foot on the premises number 678 Adams Street. Apps can I represent an idea?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Two, now they're on Tim. They're both on now. They timed off.
All right, thank you.
Acting up.
That never fails, right?
There we go.
The magic trick. Unplug it, plug it.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Tim Johnson, Architect, with a business address of 599 East Broadway, South Boston. I am here for the applicant, my client, Lincoln Adams Venture LLC. Did we lose it? There's no signal right now.
Can we try this from?
So there we go. There we go. All right, let me go quick. Why are they getting good?
Very quick.
See if I can experience out here a little. All right, there we go. Again, this site is at 670 Adams Street on the corner of Adams Street and Stedman Street. It's a 21,398 square foot lot. The Burger King on Adams Street is to the left of the property, subject property. And my client is proposing a one-story addition to an existing commercial building. The existing commercial building is my apologies, the existing commercial building is 2,880 square feet, which is shown there on the right side of the 3D view. And the new one-story addition will be 1,788 square feet. I'm going to zoom to the site plan in a second, but here are some color 3D views. The existing building is in red. The new addition is in the dark gray.
Holy Jesus.
Okay, so let me go up to the site plan real quick here.
Celtics game down tonight, you know.
So you can see the site here. The Burger King is to the right as you look at the screen. Stedman Street is to the left. Adams Street is at the top. You can see the addition on the right side, which is vertical up and down. The property to the south, north is up, the property to the south is an existing three-family. We've set the building back from that property line. It's a one-story addition. So we think, we feel the impact to that existing three-family will be de minimis. And then the Burger King drive-through lane is between the subject, the proposed addition and the existing commercial Burger King space. So we feel that any impact to Burger King or that ongoing business will be also de minimis. We are seeking relief on the east side of the property. The building set back three feet from that property line is required to be set back 15 feet. This is a business B, a zoning sub-district, retail, and professional offices aren't allowed use, aren't allowed use within certain parameters. My client is bringing in local businesses to serve the community. Two possibilities, could be a nail salon and a coffee shop. The existing parking, we have 27 spaces per our calculations, which is 200, based on the square footage of the entire project. We're required to have 24 spaces. So we have three extra spaces proposed. We're also providing two handicap or accessible spaces right near the entry, which is where the two buildings join. And again, this will be a one-story addition. And we feel that we can work tight and nicely with different materials using the same fenestration in terms of maybe a black aluminum frame, but use a different material distinguished to two buildings. It's a quick overview, Mr. Chairman.
What is it going to be used for, except for coffee?
Well, right now, we've shown it laid out as a coffee shop. There's been some interest, but there is no lease sign yet.
So this is, you're building this, you don't know who's going to be in there yet?
No, Mr. Chairman. There's been some interest, again, from local vendors or businesses. One being a nail salon, which may go in the existing building. And there's some talk about perhaps a coffee shop and then the addition, but there's nothing set in stone yet.
Is there a drive-through for the coffee shop?
No, sir, there's not.
Now, we, we kind of got what we need here. I'm just wondering what's going to be put in there.
Here we go.
I mean, something's got to go.
My client, what's going to go there, Mr. Chairman, would be local businesses serving the neighborhood. That's the
One, two, three, four, six, I don't know.
How many?
Yeah. How many are you going to rent to?
There'd only be two businesses, one in, one in the existing, and one in the proposed.
Thank you. I have no questions.
No questions.
One question.
Yes, sir.
What's on the, can you explain to me what's on the side with the three-foot setback right now? Were you required 15, but you have three?
Right now, there is just broken macadam and some parking.
Broken what?
Where the addition's going, sir? Yeah, it's kind of a, it's this macadam, kind of in tough shape, and there's been some parking on it. Also, that's where the, was the existing delivery for the old 7-Eleven was on that side where the addition is going. We won't be using that as a delivery on this project.
And you said there's a, there's a house that you've taken into account. Where is that house?
Well, south of the site on Stedman is an existing three-family. So on the site plan, north is up. And we've set the building back from that property line. And it's a one-story addition to match what's existing. So we feel the impact on, on that side will be de minimis.
Thank you.
Where is the emergency egress on the addition proposed? Because the addition is, is on the three-foot setback side of the provision.
Let me just go to that. I'll have to go to my plans. I apologize. Answer your question.
Okay. Someone knows there's a permit already given for the building, 7-Eleven or nail salon. Sorry, it's already been given out from the city?
So, my apologies, Mr. Chairman. So the second means egress would be out the rear of the property at that 14-foot setback. So where the two, where the two buildings come together behind, on the other side,
Okay.
which you would have egress to Stedman Street from there. It's also an area for both, both commercial spaces could use that as a outdoor space for workers. If you want to take a break, it's going to have southern exposure, so.
In the 14-foot rear setback?
Yes, ma'am. In that area on the other side, where the two buildings meet, is a little, would be a little, could be a little patio, patio, patio area.
Okay. And where does the trash go?
Well, right now, we have the trash located on, if you're looking at the existing building, on the right side, there is a trash area on the Stedman Street side. And we'd use that for both businesses.
Okay.
And you can even see on the plan, I show a delivery and trash lane on the west side of the property.
O'Brien, any questions?
I did have one, but I forget what it was. Hold on.
We can get back.
Oh, do you, could you tell me how many customers are with the 7-Eleven? How many stations is that being permitted for? Do you know? The existing 7-Eleven has a permit
Yes.
for a nail salon, right?
It has a permit for a nail salon.
Do you know how many stations there are in a nail salon?
Yes. Oh, they're, they should be in the drawings, but let me, let me pull it up. Here we go. So.
One, two, three, four, five, 13.
There are 13, 37 stations total. But that includes pedicure, nails, waxing, and facial. The whole shebang.
Save.
So there's 20 pedicure spots and 21 parking spaces.
That's right. There's 20 pedicure.
And only 24 parking spaces on the whole site?
There's 27.
27.
27.
27.
Okay.
And 15, so there's 20 seats for feet,
Yep.
15 for hands. And then the other would be for the waxing and the facial.
Okay. So if the salon is fully occupied, you're going to be light on parking?
There could be, if everything is maxed out on, in both commercial properties, perhaps there could be some double parking necessary or something, or street parking.
It has to be real good to max out, right? It has to be real good to max out.
Rainy Saturday, the place will be packed.
Another question. The solar panels that you've drawn, is that definite, putting solar panels on the roof?
It'll be PV ready.
She's, she's Ready for them, but you're not definitely putting them?
It, it kind, it kind of depends what program I, a client, you know, are they going to store the power on-site? Are they going to dump it into the grid like SolarCity or Sunrun? So it's kind of what program they buy into. Are they going to buy the panels or the panel supply, like a SolarCity?
The panels will go up there. They've determined that they're going to.
Yeah, well, again, yes, we'll, we'll have it, we'll have it PV ready. The MEP will bring what we need up there to hook it, hook those up.
You call it PV, PV.
Okay, thank you.
I have one, one issue with
But he didn't say who's putting them on.
Well, my, my favorite subject is traffic. The, I think that that intersection's been changed since the 7-Eleven closed, when it was getting ready to close. And I think coming out of there with a left turn, you're putting them in the middle of three lanes of traffic. At least two.
I don't see how you could take a left out of there.
I don't think it could either be
Right.
Right turn only.
Okay, so, again, my pet peeve is
Right turn only.
Right turn only.
Coming out of there. I mean, really, life's right there. You can't.
Well, you, I know you can physically, but they do.
Oh, I know.
Because they come out of Burger King.
You know what, when they're in a car accident and said, no, left turn, the guy turned left. He's at fault.
Other than that, I don't.
So you get your guy if he gets into that.
I'll go up there. I'll be a frequent flyer.
Anything else?
No further questions from me.
Thank you. You can have a seat. Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. First call, second call, third call closed. We got a letter here from the DPW. We reviewed the above written supplemental and have no further questions. Is there anyone opposed to run the side? First call, second call. And the city don't speak. There we go. Third call closed. I want to see another hair salon or nail salon. Like that's what we're doing downtown, cleaning up this mess that we have down here. And now, now we're building giant ones. And everyone I talk to, guys getting pedicures and stuff, now I get it. And I go, oh my God, what the world turned into, I don't know. Anyway, it's a business, it'll probably be a good business there. Am I worried about all the parking that he has? No. People pull in, if it's busy, they just take off. They just drive around and go. I'll be voting in favor.
A little concerning, 27 parking spaces with 37 stations. And that doesn't even take into consideration if the other new project.
They, they walk you around in those, though. You go from that one to that one, get the two things done. So there's I mean, three, three of them could be one person. You know what I mean? Because they walk around.
I'm in favor.
It also doesn't take into consideration the employees parking. And I don't know how many employees they claim to have.
Dirty salmon.
What, that many stations?
Stop mopping the box.
They'd be a fair amount of employees.
You're right, you're right.
I'm saying it's not a hassle.
Right. Counselor, where do you go?
Back there.
Please come up? Yeah, Mr. Johnson. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you take a note.
Didn't want to be associated with being a lawyer.
You didn't take an oath earlier, did you?
No, sir.
No. Mr. Chairman, please make sure everything you said to us is truthful.
Do you switch it in, and everything you've said today and going forward will be truthful?
I do, sir.
Thank you. How many people are going to be working here and where are they going to park?
That's a good question, Mr. Chairman. Off the top of my head, I cannot say for certain.
Okay.
I would, I would think that if you are working at these businesses, you have public transportation under our bikes. So that would be my short.
Because if they work here, they can't afford a car? I mean, really, I don't get you, I don't even get the answer. The answer's bizarre.
When I lived in the city, my, my family had one car and we shared it.
I can imagine.
And I was
Not a young kid.
Yeah.
Right, when I was a kid, right, a lot of people shared cars.
Yeah, so I think
It's not today. Every kid has a car today.
So I think there are different modes of transportation that people have access to.
So you don't know? You don't even know how many people are going to be working here?
No, Mr. Chairman, I know how many people are working here, sir.
No further questions?
I'd like to find out.
Exactly what we're going to do. We're going to find out how many employees are, are they going to get there? And they're going to come back to the next meeting and let us know. Anything else you want to know next meeting, guys? Anything else you want to know next meeting, guys? It'll be a quick one.
Anything else you want to know?
Testimony's over.
Do you want to know anything else?
No.
So, Mr. Chairman, will the proprietor be appearing next time with you?
Whoever. Someone's got to give us these answers. We're going to tell them what we want for answers. Next meeting, they have them or they don't, or we vote it down.
What date?
June fourth. Let them go. It'll take two minutes.
ZBA twenty-four dash seven. Tim Johnson, preparing to expand approximately two thousand eight hundred eighty square foot freestanding brick commercial building. By adding an additional seventeen eighty-eight square feet on the premises. Numbered six seventy-eight, Adam Street Quincy. Make a motion to come back. Six, June fourth, twenty twenty-four. With extended information on how many employees will be on site.
How are they going to get to work? They're going to be bused. They're going to be parked in an area some off-site. And then driven there.
And where will they park?
Where will they park if they have a car? Correct.
Make a motion.
Seconded.
On the motion, standing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, so moved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Further on it tonight. Fifty-seven Wayland Street, Jimmy Chen for finding and constructing a second floor premises on number fifty-seven Wayland Street. ZBA twenty-three twenty twenty-four twenty-three.
No computer, Jim?
No. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jim Chen, the architect, Jason D.C.R., that represented my client tonight for a constructed property of fifty-seven Wayland Street. So we fifty-seven Wayland Street is an consisting single-family residence. It's about one it's a one-story, single-story. In a industrial A-zone, sits on a thirty-six hundred twenty-eight square feet of rat size. The facade is facing Wayland Street, also a corner lot. At Wayland and Western Ave. Property is surrounded mainly by commercial properties and single and two families. Single and two stories, single families. So the existing single families consists of one thousand four forty square feet of living space with only two bedrooms and one bath. The owner is proposing to add a second floor addition onto the onto the property. On top of the main house.
Same footprint.
Same footprint. The front porch won't be extended out. The back, the nook area won't be extended just in the main house where the main foundation is. So the proposed second story will have two bedrooms and a home office. The homeowner works from home. So the it will contain, after the proposed, it will have one thousand eight hundred ninety-one square feet of living. Square square feet. The applicant is seeking only the finding for the vertical extension. For the existing non-conforming structure.
No, it'd be nice to. Yeah, that's a small house. That is small. The lot's small, too, but she has the right to build a house, so he has the right to build his house. Two stories anyway, yeah. I have no questions at all. I looked at it.
No questions.
Jim, how many parking spaces will you get after you take down the shed?
Currently, they have two two parking, tenon parking, and then they're expanding that driveway to have additional. So they'll have four.
Four?
They could have two tenon.
No questions.
Yeah, no questions.
Is there anyone want to speak in favor? First call, second call. You can have a seat. Third call closed. A letter here from the DPW. We reviewed the above reference middle and have no questions. Is there anyone opposed to run the side? Opposed or undecided, first call. Step up, name and address for the record, please.
My name is Mary Paul. I live at fifty-three Wayland. I just wanted to know, I don't really have, I'm not opposed. I just.
Yeah, you want to find out.
I just don't know what the heck is going on.
Right? There you go.
So our houses are identical. They're both two-bedroom bungalows.
They're going to put another story exactly on top of their foundation, so it'll be two stories.
Twenty-five years ago, my old neighbors. Wanted to do the same thing. An architect said, your foundation isn't strong enough.
That'll be checked by the DPW to make sure that's right.
If the entire house is going to be. You know, another level. How are they going to do the construction? My driveway is about three feet from their house.
Their driveway is on the other side, correct? And your driveway goes along the edge of their property right here. Okay.
You're to the right of the house on the plan?
Right be.
Yeah, so I'm.
On this, yeah.
Okay, so your driveway is between the two houses.
Right, there's two spaces right there between those two houses. They got they. They got enough room to walk between the fence and the house. I know that.
There's like three feet.
That's 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 all they can work with unless the contract promoter wants to pay you to use your property for a week or whatever. That's up to him. But there's enough room to do that house.
Okay.
On their own property. Make their own mess. If they mess anything up, have them fix it. If anything falls off and breaks something, have them fix it.
Take pictures.
Take pictures, right. I know the contractor be very, very careful not to hurt the neighbor, correct?
Right?
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 And here, right? All right? Right, right? Yes.
Okay.
I've had a long day.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mary. Is there anyone else? Posed or undecided, second call, third call, caller first. I'll be voting in favor. They're going to they're going to little help say they want to make it bigger.
I'm in favor.
In favor as well.
In favor.
Can I park there for the teeth? In favor.
Hey, ten bucks a week. Have a motion, please.
ZBA dash twenty-four dash twenty-three, Jim Chen for a finding. To construct a second floor on the premise numbered fifty-seven Wayland Street Quincy. Make a motion to accept as presented.
Second.
On the motion, standing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, so moved. Further, we got one more left here.
Cushing.
Fifty Cushing Street. LLC for various special permit to construct two, three-story townhouses with parking underneath an existing structure. On premise number fifty Cushing Street. Okay. Counselor, I didn't know you were back. I would have helped you up. Sorry.
No worries, man.
Sorry you're sitting there, but I didn't even didn't even die in this one job. Sorry. Here's the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Patrick Foley with the business address of two sixty-five Willard Street, and I'm the attorney for the project. I'm joined here tonight by Jim Chen, who's the architect, and Chi Man, our engineer. As well as Helen China, who is the representative for the owner. Fifty Cushing Street is a seven thousand five hundred and thirty-eight square foot lot. And located in the business C zoning district of the city. It's actually just outside the Wallaston Urban Renewal District by just one street. Currently on the site is a single-family home. This is one of only four single-family homes on the street. Seventy-five percent of Cushing Street is multifamilies. Within this mix of two families, three families, or four family homes. A lot sizes that are similar or less than the lot that we're here to talk about tonight. There's actually a four-family on the street that is actually around three thousand square feet smaller than the property at Cushing, on fifty Cushing Street. The applicant is proposing tonight to keep the single-family home with the look and feel, to keep the look and feel of the neighborhood. But also build two additional townhouses on the property. Cushing Street currently is seventy, Cushing Street is currently seventy percent renters on the street. So by putting these three condos on the market, we're actually encouraging homeownership. On the on the street and just outside the urban renewal district as well. There's a shortage of housing right now, which is causing the prices to skyrocket. And it would be good to have some inventory on the market. As well as contribute some more tax money to the city. The property will now have eight parking spots. Three will be in the garages by the townhomes, and the other five will be outside. In order to not have the cars be visible, the applicant will have long plans shelving the cars. This project will have minimal effect on traffic. The street is a one-way street. And this home is actually one house away from Beale Street. So it's a one-way street. They pull and pull right out, pull right on Beale Street. The new townhouses will be two beds and two baths. I'll have Jim walking through the layout.
Jim, it sounds like you're going with the.
Sybil.
Site, you're praying first? Mr. Chairman, for the record, my name is Chi Man from Hardy Men Design Group. First, the parking is seven parking, not eight. Excuse me. We have the existing condition plans and the proposed side plan side by side, so you can do a good. Existing building with existing garage on site or a single driveway. So what we are proposing is to keep the existing building and also build a two-family, two-pack townhouses in the back. It will be served by a single curb cut driveway coming in, and we'll have four parkings on the side here. And then we've got a garage parking in the building. So there will be seven parking altogether. Three families, so we have more than two per unit. Extra physical parking on site as well. The site will be served by all public utilities. Water services. Excuse me, and sanitary service tap to the public name. Drainage-wise, the site currently has no stormwater control, just like any old houses in the neighborhood. So all the rain, all the rainfall in the roof and the driveway are washed down to Cushing Street and entered into the city system. We are proposing on this. Proposals to install a stormwater management system. There'll be a cowtack system underground. It will take all the roof runoff. And. And then you'll mitigate the runoff before, and also a chongqing that catch capture all the parking area runoff. And then we'll go for the chongqing, a subman hold, which is going to help move some of the TSS. And settlement before it's going to a. Cowtack underground discharge system. So we have run a full drainage report, and we are mitigating two, ten, twenty-five, a hundred year storm that we are lowering the peak rate of discharge and also the. Bornea. That rainfall as a comparison, P and P, development on site. And also the stormwater being discharged into the street will be much cleaner because we are on pre-trim. There's any questions?
What's the building number?
Jim is going to go for it.
What is it right there?
Oh, I don't know. But I'm sorry. Jim Chen. So the existing single is a single family to rename. We're proposing a two-family townhouse in the rear of the property. Dimension is forty-eight by thirty. The overall square footage for these units are about fifteen hundred square feet with two bedrooms. And so the front curb cut will remain as is, and we have, we're creating a additional five parkings. At the at the at the site on the exterior. And these two townhouses on the right side will have the two parking. And then the on the left side will have one parking and over-size parking. So the first floor consists of. The parking garage, mechanical closets, and some storage closet. The second floor, which is the the first living space, is an open concept with kitchen. Living and dining space and a half store, half bathroom here. And additional home office in the back. The third floor will have two bedrooms. One in which are there's a master bedroom with master bath. And a common bathroom here in the secondary bedroom. This is the front elevation here. We'll have a double door, double door wide garage door. Entry to the to the unit will be on either the left or the right side. The total height of this upgrade to the roof peak is thirty-three feet and ten inch. So it'll be less than the required very high peak. And this is the rear of the property. The rear elevation. And this is the left and right side. Both of them.
What's the outside on the outside of the building?
The outside will be cement issues, a hardy plank.
Hiding point.
Siding with PVC fins.
Okay. Those are my questions. Anyone else?
Yeah, the question, the presenter before Jim said you had seven parking spaces, but you said eight, and it says eight on the forms we were presenting with.
Five, five and three.
Five and three is eight, but the but the presenter before you said seven. Was he in error or are you in error? Okay.
Great. So it's eight. Shows eight, yeah. Shows eight.
I'm happy with eight. Thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Helen China, and here is the owner's representative for fifty LLC for fifty Cushing Street. I want to take a couple of minutes to reiterate a couple of things Mr. Foley said. Make sure that you understand part of these things were taken into the decision process by the owner. If we all know that this area is going to be developed over the next, the course of the next few years, but it's going to be a very different style. In our decision to do this type of a development here, we wanted to keep the look and feel of the neighborhood. So the main house, currently the blue house, if you've been by it. People like it, has a nice feel to it, and we want to reiterate that or duplicate that same look and feel in the back. So we're not going to be part of the bigger buildings and the block-style places that are planned to be in the immediate neighborhood. So we feel that the look and feel of this and the use of this property is the highest and best use of the property. If you take into consideration some of the numbers that Patrick mentioned to you. Seventy-five percent of the street is multifamilies. Seventy percent of them are non-owner occupied buildings. In this case, we're creating additional opportunities for homeownership and not in the block-style condos. This, the main building in the front is going to remain a single family. It will be become part of the association for the two associated buildings, but it's homeownership. It's not rentals. We've got a. Four-family just around the corner on a four thousand seventy-three square foot lot. Ours is nearly doubled that. Sixty-seven percent of the multifamilies on this section of the street are under five thousand square feet. So in terms of it's fitting in with the neighborhood. In my opinion, improving this end of the street. I think we've done a lot of work and paid attention to the detail and what we're bringing to this neighborhood. Mr. Foley also mentioned the limited impact on the traffic because there is only one house to the right of us. And then you're on Beale Street. And this section of Cushing Street is a one-way street. So just to recap, our our main goal was to keep the look and feel of the neighborhood. Take advantage of the zoning there, create a multi-unit, build a multi-unit property. But keep in with the look and feel of this downtown Wallaston neighborhood. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about the thought process or what our plans are.
So you're just saying they're going to make the rear buildings look like the front?
We are, yes.
Awesome. Have any, no questions?
No questions.
One question about your landscaping. Greed space, what do you plan to do for green space?
That's a that's a good point, Mr. Chen. So one of the things I wanted to mention, and we didn't mention it here. So we are going to shield the parking from the street. So if you don't see the detail on here, but the plan is to put full-size mature arborvitaries along this section here. So when you are coming down the street, these cars will be shielded behind the tall plantings. So you're not going to be, the neighbor across the street's not going to be looking at everybody's cars parked there. They're not going to be looking at our current tenant's boat and the six trucks he has in there. So there's a lot of green space out here. And the other thing I want to mention, if for those of you, I know you like to drive by the properties. So this current property has a parking structure in the back, which at one point was a garage. It is no longer used as a garage and hasn't been in many years, so that's used as a, you know, kind of a storage facility. And it's not too much different from the, you know, the layout that you see in our proposed development. So the back and the side still provides a fair amount of green space there. And it was a main part of our thought process to shield those cars from the neighbors across the street. So it will be mature plantings. The plan is arborvitaries. We're shooting. So it will be mature plantings, the plan is arborvitaries, we're shooting for, you know, anything with a starting height of, of, uh, seven feet to start.
Very good. Any questions?
How about on the parking side where, where they're pulling in, and the neighbors next door will be something to block those headlights? Will there be arborvitaries on that side as well?
Sure, yeah, this side here?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is a two-family over here.
Yeah.
Um, and it doesn't, from the way it lines up, um, our headlights aren't really gonna hit their living area. It's gonna be below their living area, but yes, mature plantings along this side as well, straight down to the end of the property.
Right.
And then, we haven't determined what the back will be, but there'll be some bulk and some heft to it.
All right, thanks, Helen.
Mm-hmm.
Um, would you consider moving, why, uh, give us a little information on why you're so tight of the setback on the right side versus shifting the structure a little bit more to the left?
We lose the parking. So we wouldn't have the ability to have the, the, um, garage parking here. So, um, so if we were to shift it over, the existing house is staying. So if you come down, you lose the ability to park here. You don't have the turning radius or the ability to get into the parking garage. So the way that this has been designed, this unit has two spaces that you can easily pull into. And this one will only be one. So if we were to shift it over to the left, we would lose that garage parking, and that's a, it's a huge selling feature, but it's also beneficial to people. As somebody that doesn't have a garage, I wish I did.
How wide is the area? So I'm looking at the plan right here. So what is this area? How wide is this driveline between...
So Jim, the section where the garage is covered, where you have the single car, yes, how wide is that?
That's, that's, I'll use, I'll say about, uh, fourteen feet.
I'd like to see it shift over a little and give a little more on the, the, I think the, I think the two, the two-eight is tight on this side for the setback on the right. I think you could shift the structure, uh, shift the new building a little bit to the left and give a little more space on, uh, on that side. And still, if it's fourteen feet, a typical parking space is nine. Counsel, ten. As somebody that's just recently built buildings with nine, you can't open the car doors at the same time. Sure, but they're gonna come into the garage. Yeah. And they'll have plenty of room to open the car door in the garage. Yeah. So if you have a fourteen, you're telling me you have a fourteen-foot driveline, you could give up a couple feet and widen the setback on that side. Okay. That would be my recommendation. Thank you.
So Brian?
I just want a question, we got in the drainage, there's nothing in there now that drains.
No, nothing.
There's no system.
The rainfall hit the roof and the pavement, it's just pushing.
It washes over the cushion, right?
Yeah, washing down.
Swim and pool over there.
Yep.
Okay, no further questions, thank you.
I'm not sure, did you upload the letters of support?
I haven't, I haven't.
Okay, just wanted to make sure you saw them.
You can have a seat.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor, saying that? There's nine letters here I have, uh, support, just give their addresses, it's fine.
Whom it may concern?
No, just the address.
The address, number one Cushing Street Quincy, Mass.
Yep.
In favor. Number two Cushing Street, I'm immediate neighbor Cushing, and he's in favor. Number five Cushing Street in favor. Number nine Cushing Street in favor. Number twenty-two Cushing Street in favor. Uh, forty-three Cushing Street in favor. Fifty-one fifty-five Cushing Street, uh, in favor. Fifty-three Cushing Street in favor. Uh, twenty-one Beale Street, uh, in favor of the project.
Yeah, so there was only one outside the street that I, that I saw, I was around the corner. We'll put those on record. Is there anyone here who wants to speak in favor? First call, second call? Third call closed. And a letter here from the DPW, did I give it you?
Nope.
I already read it, sorry.
Not ten favors together.
No, just one favor. Ain't too bad.
Fifty Cushing Street, case number ZBA twenty-four thirty-one. We reviewed the submittal for the above referenced project. Our comments as is followed. Number one, uh, the maintenance plan for drainage system shall be recorded to Norfolk County Registry of Deed. Number two, install a curb, stop valve and box on the sidewalk. The applicant should confirm the appropriate connection tapping sleeve versus anchore tree with DPW prior to construction. Number three, install a clean-out for the sewer pipe. Number four, advise who will maintain the driveway and utility facilities after development. Upon completion of the project as-built plan, showing all utilities, building footprints need to be submitted along with a digital file and elevation certificate should also be submitted uh, if the property is in the flood zone. If further information is required, please advise.
Thank you. Call of party hearing closed. Anyone opposed on the side? First call? Second call? Third call? All are closed. Yeah, uh, and Ms. Barry would like to see that two feet to the left if we could. We'll move that building two feet to the left and stick and get in near that garage. Uh, anything else, guys?
When they do move the, uh, the driveway over, if the curb cut doesn't work, I think they may need to adjust.
No, it'll still work, it's just, the curb cut's gonna be the same. Just the house is gonna be moved over.
I, I understand that.
So how's it not gonna move?
As long as it, as long as it...
Oh, 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 yeah.
Um, otherwise, if it doesn't line up properly, if people are doing this to get in and out, they may need to modify the curb cut.
Yeah, oh, okay, all right. Anything else?
Building will probably address that.
Yeah, sure, you got it. So Brian, else?
I'm broke because of the drainage improvements in that area, the, uh, process rate is tough, so...
Anything that involves the drainage, then a little bit by me.
Yeah, puddles up like crazy there. Puddles up like crazy.
Collins, else?
Yeah.